At this time, we'd ask you to please stand. Reverend Williams will give us invocation. Remain standing to our pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to thee once again, just as we have so many times before. Give him thanks for our blessings and asking for your grace and your mercy. Grant, oh Lord, to those of us who have been chosen by our constituents to assume the responsibility of providing governance that will be in the best interest of all our citizens. Help us to reach out to the children, youth, adults, seniors, to the poor, to the middle class, and to the rich. Please enable us to construct an environment that will make possible the opportunity for all who live here to use their skills, talents, and capabilities. Help us to realize that everyone should have the right to the freedom of religion, speech, press, and all other rights that will enable them, as individuals, to live his or her life to its fullest potential. We ask thee for the divine maintenance of all those of us who are within the confines of a government of the people, for the people, and by the people. Please bless our city, our county, our state, our nation, and all nations. This we ask in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
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 Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna have a hard-working clerk to have a roll call for us.
Mayor Kay.
Here.
Mayor Preston Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Hitt.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. We're all here. Next, we have minutes of a work session and regular meeting of June 15th for approval.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion and a second. Any additional comments or corrections or additions? Hear none. All in favor, ladies and gentlemen, say a aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Public comment period. This is the time we set aside for anyone who would like to speak to us for up to three minutes to come and do so.
I don't want to see anybody, but I'm here.
Oh, I like, I wanna see anybody who comes.
You're my friend. Lonny Casey Jr., chairman of Watchdog of Public Funds. Chuck, we've been watching you for 14 years, lining your pockets with old people's money. Sir, the last thing you did disrespects the whole entire city of Goldsboro when you held a Stony Creek Free Will Baptist Church hostage to allow your business partner, former Commissioner Jack Best, to hook onto that line, and they were paying $500,000 cash for it. You need to resign and walk out of here. You did before you disrespect the city anymore, sir. You're gonna get the same thing Stephen LaRoguque and may you have a blessed day, sir. And that happened, Reverend. I'll give you the man's name, and it'll be in the paper tomorrow. Have a blessed day.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? See none, we will close the public comment period.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've sat here for 14 years and heard Mr. Casey attack me, and I'm about, got a few notes I just want to. And the reason is, I don't, it's not to give Mr. Casey any credibility, but simply in case anybody watching this show would think he had one iota of what he's talking about, I would like them to hear the other side of the story. And what I wanna start with is just letting our citizens know that, look, I'm, I know I'm a public official, I should be questioned, I want you to question me. You know, we're not gonna always agree, but, but one thing this council always believes in is hearing from our citizens. I can tell you over the years, I've changed my opinion because of citizens' input, I've gotten ideas I would've never had because of citizen input, and everybody up here, I know, appreciate citizens' input. We want it to be legitimate. We don't want it to be half-truths, we don't want it to be innuendos, we don't want it to be, um, just spiteful, as Mr. Casey is most of the time. Now, I'm gonna give you a few examples. He, he's come up here and accused me and accused me enough times that I've got enough things I can retort, so I'm gonna do just a few of them. And it's gonna take a minute, Mayor, but I've been doing it for 14 years, so I'm entitled to the five minutes, okay? All right, so anyway, first, I, I'm just, some examples. Now, this is a letter that I obtained from the Board of Elections, and this letter's from the Watchdog of Public Funds. Anybody in here knows me as Chuck Allen. If you saw the name Lawrence Coben Allen on a ballot, you would think, who is that? I don't know who that is, 'cause for 40 years, everybody here's known me as Chuck Allen. So that's what I asked to put on my ballot was Chuck Allen. Well, Mr. Casey wrote this letter, and it's not that he wrote the letter, it's that what he says in the letter, it really, it's just how he operates. And he says that they're filing an official protest against Mr. Lawrence Coben Allen for using an alias, Chuck Allen, on his ballot for mayor of the city of Goldsboro instead of using his legal birth name. Here's the part, "We do not want any person representing the city that is ashamed of his birth name using an alias name instead of to mislead the citizens." Well, I think anybody who knows me would know me as Chuck Allen, and I'm pretty proud of my name either way, so that doesn't matter, but it's things like this that Mr. Casey's doing. Another example is for the, and up here, you know, if you, if you've listened at all, I'm gonna name them. He's had me investigated so far by the SBI, the Revenue Department, the District Attorney, the Attorney General, the sheriff, and the latest, a couple weeks ago, was the State Auditor. The only person I don't know is the FBI, I don't think he's had them up here yet. And what I would say to you is, none of these people have ever, ever contacted me, so either they're working in secrecy or they're not doing anything, I don't know. To my knowledge, they've never contacted anybody with the city. So our question is what he's, what kind of information he's giving. Another complaint that Mr. Casey has lodged against me is that I got facade grants for my personal use, and I did, I got, during my council period, I've gotten two facade grants. One for like $2,500 several years ago for a building on Center Street that I've since sold, but the facade grant stayed on the building. And I, and I, um, wanna, but the one I want specifically to mention is the one I got for $20,000, and this was back in 2002. And before I start about the $20,000, I just want everybody to know, you know, the facade grant is a tool in our toolbox, in the city's toolbox that we use, and at the time we started, we really needed it. Anybody that knows anything about downtown knows how bad downtown was, and we've made progress, we're not there, but the facade grant was just one way of trying to get people to improve their building, because globally, the whole downtown improved, that was the idea. And I did get a facade grant. And so I wanna tell you what happened with that facade grant. I bought, what is now Maxway, and the, uh, building behind it, which was like, I think, the old, an old wheel repair shop or something, but anyway, when I bought it, there was a church in it, okay? So you had a storefront church that didn't really contribute, was not paying any taxes in downtown. The building behind it that I bought was a condemned or either fixing to be condemned, the roof was completely, um, caved in, the second floor was caved in, I renovated the building, and I did use a facade grant for that purpose. But now, what I wanna report to you is today, you have the Maxway downtown that hires people, you have nine luxury apartments downtown, you have businesses downtown under those apartments, people who live in those apartments all the time, so they're contributing to downtown. But the biggest thing is, this project pays $9,076 a year in county taxes, $8,852 in city taxes, and $3,200 in MSD taxes every year. So that's $21,000 that one building pays in this county city every year. So I'm not much of a mathematician, but I would think even the watchdogs would think that's a pretty good return on investment, a pretty good use of facade grants, and I think it would love and appreciate if we could give more of those. The, the next thing I wanna touch on is Mr. Casey is always insinuating that I'm up here lining my own pockets, getting rich, doing all these things. What I want Mr. Casey and anybody else to know, if I was worried about money and was doing this job for money, I would get off this council, because this council cost me a fortune. In the time that I commit to it, that I could be spending on my business where I would get paid more, I'm sure, the time I could spend with my family, and on top of that, if I got off this, then I could be at city work, which I can't do today, and I don't think I'd tell anybody how much work the city does. I wouldn't get it all, but I'd get some of it. So to say that, this is, is really dis, disingenuous. Um, the other thing I want Mr. Casey, kinda, he's nicknamed me King Chuck, because he's kinda behind my back, 'cause he thinks I get my way too much up here. So I do wanna address that. The first thing I would say to our citizens is, I don't do anything up here by myself. It takes at least four votes to do anything, and most of the time, 95% of the time, we're at seven votes, okay? At seven votes, because we're always up here doing what we believe to be in the best interest of the city. And I think that's what we do, and I don't think, you know, that Mr. Casey can question that. Um, so I think he confuses. Now, you know, I've been on this council since 1999, 12 years of that I've spent as mayor for 10. I've never, to my, if I remember correctly, I have never missed a council meeting, I have moved family vacations, I've done whatever to be at a council meeting, because I feel that strongly about my obligation. And so I think what, what I consider to be hard work, dedication, very passionate about our city, he considers to be something different. I continue to build relationships and work all the time, every week I'm doing something for this city, um, got relationships all around this state that helps this city, and I stand 100% behind my record. I don't think anybody can question my record, and I especially don't think Mr. Casey can question my record, 'cause I don't know of any one good thing he's done to help his city. All I know he does is call up here, harass our staff, worry our staff, ask for public record, it takes an enormous amount of time. And so I just would ask to our citizens, if you have any questions or you have any comments, come to me, come to the manager, come to the city council, and get your information from the source, 'cause we're always here and I'm always willing to share it with you. Thank you.
No, no, this is not a con, this is not a debate. You can come, this is not a debate.
But you're still your born. I just wanted to correct that.
Well, it, okay. Uh, I don't have a dog in this fight. I, here, both sides is what's happening. I do know that my involvement with the city, Chuck Allen's been an outstanding council member, and has contributed his eartime to hit committees, and he's done an awful lot for our city, and I'm just glad to know that, uh, he's on our side and he works with us. All of the other stuff, I'm not aware of that, but I do know, as having worked with him from the day he came on, that he's been a damn good council member, as far as I'm concerned. He's, he does have the citizens' interests at heart, you can bank on that. Okay, we'll move on. Presentations, we have, uh, three, and I'd like, we have some retirements. They're always sort of bittersweet. I'm glad to know that these people have earned the right to retire, but boy, do we always miss them when they leave here, and many of them are so quiet, we forget they're around, but like, like the first one I'm going to recognize, and I've known him from the day he came here, very quietly, but he's done a fantastic job. And that is, I, the resolution. Resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Officer Michael L. Green as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than 23 years. Whereas Officer Michael L. Green retires on September 1st, 2015, as a police officer with the Goldsboro Police Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 23 years of service. And whereas Michael began his career on May 11, 1992, as a police officer with the Goldsboro Police Department, and whereas on July 30, 2008, Michael was transferred to part-police officer with where he has served until his retirement. Whereas Michael has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, the other city officials and employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro are expressing to Michael L. Green their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that one, we express to Michael L. Green our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer Michael our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this 17th day of August 2015. Michael, if you will come forward and your supervisor, I think, would like to make a comment, if you please come forward as well. You know, Michael, I used to go through parking lot, and I see you all the time. I haven't been out here lately.
Well, I see you there.
Boy, that, if I haven't been out here, it must, it means we haven't had any problems out here. I go where the problems are, so, and when you first went there, I've been out there a lot. So thank you so much for what you've done for our citizens, and congratulations. Thank you, I don't know what you're gonna do, but you've earned the right to do it.
Thank you, Chuck.
Chief, would you, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of all of our citizens. This is yours. And enjoy.
I think Officer Green started maybe a month or two before I did, so I've gotten to know him over the last three years very well. Um, if there's one thing that I can say about Mike Green, he was doing the community policing thing before it was cool. I mean, he's been doing it his whole career, uh, and he's done a wonderful job of it. So anytime you think of community policing, this is the officer.
This is the guy.
That's gonna bring it to you. Also, he's the only officer that I know, we did people come in the lobby asking for an officer, but they would always call him by his nickname. For the longest time, I didn't know what his nickname was, but there's just.
Tell them.
Several. Peanut. Maybe they can say we're peanut, but.
Not that he's retired, I learned that he's Peanut.
But that shows you, he gets out and he talks with the community, and they get to know him, and they, you know, and they come up there and ask more personally, that's it, they're, that's his, he is their police officer, so he's done a wonderful job for his agency.
He has done phenomenal. We're gonna miss you.
I'm gonna miss you as well.
But enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another one, and I'm not sure that I wanna read this one, but I got to. Oh my. We go back for, where is she?
She's back over there.
She's hiding from me, I can't see her, I see her huffing, but, okay, I know she's near. Resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Cindy Stallet as, as the city of Goldsboro occupational health nurse for more than nine years. Whereas Cindy Stallet retires on August 28, 2015, as an occupational health nurse in the hospital's health promotional department, assigned to the city of Goldsboro for more than nine years. Whereas Cindy began her career on February 13, 20, 2006, as the occupational health nurse for the city of Goldsboro, courtesy of Wayne Memorial Hospital, where she has served until her retirement. And whereas Cindy has proven herself to be an excellent caregiver of, for the employees of the city of Goldsboro, and Nurse Cindy's mission has been to educate, advise, treat, support employees on health issues, and she's done a fantastic job at that. Cindy has proven herself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the employees of the city of Goldsboro. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, the other city officials, employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro are expressing to Cindy Stallet their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we want to express to Cindy Stallet our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure at the city of Goldsboro. We offer Cindy our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in our future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this 17th day of August 2015. Cindy, and I think, uh, Faith is gonna, Human Resources is coming, say a few words, and I may say a few. It is my honor and pleasure to present to you on behalf of all of our citizens, and we appreciate so much what you've done for us. You've got nine years, it seems longer, but you've done all of ours during nine years, and, uh, hey, see you though. You know, she takes on me like you wouldn't believe, she does, she gives me all her time.
I give back.
She's wrong. It's, it's mutual, man. We take on each other. I'm gonna miss you, you know that.
Yes, sir.
She gives them a freaking shot needle, I, you know, I feel it, man, it bugs me when it's blue diamond, and when I need one, I say I gotta get it from Cindy.
Thank you.
I'm gonna miss you, and you gotta come back and see us. And you got her now, man, full time. Faith, is there something you'd like to say?
You got her nerves full time, too. And council, uh, Cindy has definitely been dedicated to the employees here at the city of Goldsboro, and we are really wanting to miss her. Um, I tease her a lot, uh, she, she's always so serious, so whenever, sometimes when I say things, she's like, really nice and nothing, I'm just joking, but, um, she's always so serious, so dedicated, even on snow days, I'll say, well Cindy, you know, Cindy Hall's close, she goes, I know, but we still have employees who are working, so I really need to be at the office. And so, you know, she gets Jay to bring her out. She, you know, she's sitting out here working, which is awesome. Um, Cindy has saved us, you know, a tremendous amount, you know, in our healthcare coverage and things of that nature, so she's really worked hard, she's truly, truly been dedicated to her profession, and we just wanted to tell her that, we definitely appreciate her. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to say a few words about this, because I started a wellness program way back in, I think it's 79, and we had health problems, we had high insurance rates, nobody would insure us, and we got a health nurse to come in, to start the program. It's a long story, but I can say this, and this is something you can all understand. Before we got a health nurse, our health risks were so high, no insurance company wanted to hire us, uh, to cover us, so we had to be put in a pool, and they charged us exorbitantly to get coverage. Once we got a health nurse, now we're sort of insured. Our health risks are reduced tremendously, and this lady knows the health risk of every employee we have, and she won't tell us what their health is, but she sure deals with them and let them know that they got a problem and they need to take care of it, so that they can live a long, healthy life. And Cindy, I know this, I work with the, with the state, risk management, I've done that for many years, I cheer their board, and I have, I've used you as an example throughout the state for other cities to go out and get a wellness program. And the lady will now, if you're insured with them, they will give you $5,000 or something to start it. So what you and we have done here has resonated throughout the state. Other cities are doing this, and our health insurance at the state level through risk management is reducing because of that. So you didn't know that, because you started something that's spread like wildfire, and the whole state's been looking for it. And I wanna personally thank you, but not to make you know that, so I thought it was a good time.
Pretty thing you do.
Glad to know quite a few times.
She's trying to play.
I can't believe this, she can't say a word.
It has really been a, a pleasure to, um, work with all the employees, I count them like family.
You do.
I do.
You do, I know you do.
So it's, it's been the best part of my career.
All right.
For my kids.
Come on. Now Cindy, I know, I know you, you've got a honey-do list for Jay, but he can still play racquetball.
And Cindy, I hope I still see you once in a while next door.
Yes.
If you guys don't wanna spend the rest of the evening with us, you have earned the right to leave. We do have, uh, two resolutions to be adopted, and I'll offer, uh, first, uh, resolution for Mr. Green, Michael Green, to be adopted.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. And for Cindy Stallet, I offer her resolutions to be adopted.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. That's the official business that we had to finish on, and now we will go to, uh, Police Department, update.
Mayor and council, I'd ask Chief West if he would come and just give you a brief update of some of the events over the last week and a half, and tell you where we are relative to that. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the recent shootings that have happened in the city of Goldsboro over the past several days. It's my hope that by speaking to you tonight, it'll reassure you and the public that most of these recent shootings are not random acts. In fact, the shooting involves individuals that are known to police and that know each other. Because all these cases are still being investigated, I can only give you a limited amount of information, but it's information that I feel is important. Over the past 10 days, there have been 21 independent calls to police for shots fired. On Saturday, August 8th, at approximately 12:31 a.m., there were several calls reported that there were shots fired in the area of Wayne and Moore Drive and Rule Avenue. Officers responded, they found one vehicle, two occupants. The driver died at the scene, passenger was taken to the hospital. He has since been released. Approximately 2:45 a.m., a call was received in reference to shots fired in the vicinity of the 700 block of East Pine Street. Uh, one victim was located with injuries, and they also were taken to the hospital for treatment. The investigation continues on both of those cases. At approximately 3:41 p.m., a call was received reporting shots fired at the Donnell Express Mark located at 518 East Elm Street. The victim was critically wounded and rushed to the hospital in a private vehicle prior to the officer's arrival. That victim later died. A warrant for one open count of murder has been issued for Rashad Terrell Daniels. Mr. Daniels is from the Goldsboro and Grange area, and he's considered to be armed and On Sunday, August 9th, at approximately 8:24 a.m., a call was received reporting shots fired in the vicinity of the 800 block of Crawford Street. One victim was located with injuries, transported to the hospital, the investigation on that case continues. On Monday, August 10th, at approximately 1:36 p.m., a call was received reporting shots fired in the vicinity of the Walmart on Spence Avenue. The victim was in a vehicle stopped on Rule Avenue at Spence Avenue at the light. A subject fired shots at him, struck his vehicle, the victim in the vehicle was. A warrant for the arrest, or a warrant for arrest was issued for Cornelius Donnell Weeks, charging him with attempted first-degree murder, discharging a weapon into an occupied vehicle in possession of a handgun by a felon. Mr. Weeks was arrested by the Raleigh Police Department on August 12th and was brought back to Goldsboro and placed in the Wayne County Jail under an $800,000 secured bond. On Thursday, August 13th, 9:29 p.m., a call was received of a shooting on Prince Avenue. The victim provided a description of the suspect, and responding officers were able to locate and arrest the suspect. That individual, Lehman Cordias Holmes, was charged with assault with a deadly weapon with the intent to kill, robbery with a dangerous weapon, and other felony drug charges. He was placed in the Wayne County Jail under a $350,000 secured bond. Friday, August 14th, at approximately 2:57 a.m., a call was made reporting shots fired at the Best Value Inn at 701 Highway 70 East. Two victims were injured and taken to the hospital in private vehicles prior to the officer's arrival. The investigation continues in this case, and I believe that arrest warrants will be obtained by the investigator in the coming days. One of the individuals that has been arrested and charged with these shootings have come through our GPAC, uh, program. Uh, they have been notified. What that means is that their case will get fast-tracked through the court system, uh, with minimal delays, and if convicted, he'll receive a severe, uh, sentence. I want to reassure council and the public that not all these shootings, or that all these shootings, not all of them are random acts. In most cases, the suspect and the victim knew each other. All the incidents that I've just mentioned are still under investigation, and even though there's been a few arrests, warrants issued, investigators are still following up on leads, and the public is providing tips. I encourage anyone with information of these crimes, or any crime in Wayne County, to please call Crime Stoppers, 919-735-2255, or text 919-222-4230. And I'll give you the numbers just one more time. It's 919-735-2255, or you can text 919-222-4230. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Comment? I'm, I'm really glad that you took the time to explain this, because everywhere I go, people are talking about shots fired in Goldsboro. And I tell them what you just said. This is not random shooting, so we should all be, we're all concerned, but we would really be concerned if we had people. enforcement, all of you, I know what a tough job you have to do, and I fully support you and understand what's happening here. And you're doing all that you can to arrest them and find them and stop, but it's extremely difficult. It's extremely difficult, because you're dealing with a select group of people who don't really care about life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness. They don't. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that you should relieve some of the anxiety of innocent citizens who, you know, have been hearing about all these shootings, to know that the shooters have acquaintances with the victim right here. So I should relieve some of the anxiety. Thank you.
Yesterday's News Argus had an excellent editorial about it, and it was good to see the News Argus make that stand. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. They get it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chiefs.
Thanks.
Public hearings.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Item E is Z six fifteen, Dillard Academy. The property is located on the south side of West Elm Street between South George Street and the railroad. The map indicated on the screen shows the property in the hatched area and is currently zoned general business. The property has frontage of two-hundred-and-twenty-six feet, an average depth of two-hundred-and-three feet, and a total area of approximately one-point-zero-six acres. The present zoning, as I mentioned, is general business, and the proposed zoning classification is Office and Institutional One. The map before you is our comprehensive land use plan, indicating that the recommended land use is industrial. Surrounding properties, the blue is Office and Institutional. The teal color is mixed-use downtown, and the yellow gold color is High Dency Residential. The aerial photography presented to you now is, they're showing an existing building on the lot which has been vacant for some time. The property is currently zoned general business, which does not permit private, public, elementary, or secondary schools. Dillard Academy proposes to utilize the building for offices and storage. The City Council approved revised site and landscape plans for Dillard Academy Charter School on June sixth, two thousand and eleven. The revised plans included the placement of a seven-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot, one-story modular building to the rear of the existing school. The number of modifications were approved along with the site and landscape plan due to existing space limitations. Dillard Academy serves children in kindergarten through fourth grade. On January sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, Dillard Academy purchased a vacant property to the east which contains an existing vacant building formerly utilized by Ceramic Bath Company, which will allow for future expansion of the school facilities to the west. If the rezoning is approved for the property prior to occupying the building, site and landscape plans will have to be submitted and approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. These are pictures of the site. The recommendation of the staff, at this time, no action is necessary. Planning Commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on September the eighth.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner? Thanks, Commissioner. This is a public hearing as just described. Anyone who would like to speak, for or against, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone like to speak? I see no signs.
You missed it. Uh, Mr. Stokes is here, Mr. Mayor.
Hmm?
Mr. Stokes.
Oh, Mr. John Stokes, I saw him back there, I didn't know what he was, I should have known, though. I know who you are, John, but would you give your name and information to all of them, John Stokes?
Good evening, Councilmember. My name is John Stokes, and I serve as chairman of the board for the Dillard Academy Charter School. And we greatly appreciate you all consenting to approve our requests, give us a chance to expand. We started the school some years ago. We've got sixty kids, and now we have grown, and we need more space. And by approving that request, give us more opportunity to grow. Thank the commission members for consideration also, and we do want to come back at some time to give you a formal presentation to let you know about who we are, what, what we do, and how we're doing it. Thank you so very much.
I know who you are and what you're doing and how you're doing, but we'd be glad for you to come back anytime and talk to us about your, your school and what you're doing, John.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we will close this public hearing, and that is the only public hearing we have, so our hard-working Planning Board, Commission, if they'd like to leave, they can do that now, but if they'd like to sit and keep us company and we, that's okay, too. I knew it. They're smart. Thank you, guys. Consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda originally consisted of items F through I. You added item J, Minority and Women Business Outreach Participation Plan, so your consent agenda is items F through J.
Very good. We'll have, entertain the motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Ed?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Broad?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anka?
Yes.
Consent agenda's approved. We have no items for individual actions, City Manager's report.
Mayor and Council, first, a couple items. First, I would like to just let the community know, we did have a pushback ceremony. Several council members attended that today for Engine One, our new fire engine, so it's in service officially as of today, and a half-million-dollar investment that ought to serve the community well, and I know the chief and the firefighters are really appreciative of that investment, but I also know the community will appreciate that over the long term, and it's a truck built really for us, and so I think it'll serve us very well. I would mention Mayor Pro Tim Allen was appointed to our State Military Affairs Commission that ought to bode well for our area and our community as well, and keep us very plugged into what's going on at the state level, and I do want to welcome Councilmember Goodman back, and good to see him up and moving around again. So welcome back, sir. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
No report, Mr. Speaker.
Very good. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, two things, Mayor. I want, I just want to, Ethan, if you would, take to the, kind of, one of G said, the paper did a great editorial this weekend, one of the best ones I've ever seen, and they get it. They get what the deal is with the shootings, and I appreciate them being a partner and calling on the community, because it's going to take a community to work on this project.
Absolutely.
And then secondly, I would like to welcome Councilmember Goodman back. It's nice to have him back in the seat.
Very good. Okay, Michael?
Just to say, welcome back, Bill. We missed you. Glad you're back with us.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Bill?
Yes, sir. I have three things. Welcome back, Mr. Goodman. I know you're ready to be back. And next thing is, I'd like to, again, thank the Police Department. When you read the litany of what was happening, that sounded like maybe a week in combat. You're thinking of all the things happening at one time, and they were able not only to respond, they were able to do the crowd control, they were able to do all the things to keep it quiet and keep it under control. That is very difficult. And the paper did a good job, too.
Yes.
They did a good job not just publicizing and trying to stir up the flames. Last thing, sir, is I want to give my support to Councilman Allen. I know of no one that works harder at his job, and I can tell you, I was his banker, too, and I was worried sometimes that he was working this hard. He works, he works at the state level, he works at the national level. I, I'm just, I want to give him my support, and frankly, I am tired of these, just the one year I've been here, I'm tired of these character assassinations and unsupported allegations and threats by Mr. Casey. I, they are unnecessary and harmful to this city. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Will?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I must say, I am glad to be back. My wife has held me hostage for a while, and she's been tired of me, and I can't say I've been tired of her. But, uh, things are getting better. They're getting better. Uh, and I had to wait for some things to, you know, kind of break, to see how they were going before I decided anything. But, um, I've had a visit with my doctor today, my surgeon, and things are looking very, very well. And matter of fact, I had a fall last Thursday, and instead of it being bad, he said it was good because it helped break up some of the scar tissue.
Wow!
So, but, um, I'm just glad to be back, and I thank so many people for the phone calls, the flowers, the visits, the offers to carry me out, to get me out of the house and carry me around, so I wouldn't forget where Goldsboro was. But, uh, things have been real, they've been very good. I can't complain one bit. I've been blessed.
Good to see you back. I could tell you in a little pain when you came in this morning.
Yeah, yeah.
But I guess it's getting better as you, as you go, or is it still, it's still there, I'm sure?
It's, it's still there. He did tell me he didn't want me to stop physical therapy, so...
Be careful, Michael will have you in yoga.
That's right. They're gonna be pushing and pulling on me and twisting, so, um, I just go along with it, but...
Well, we hope you're doing wind sprints pretty soon, and tell us you're really, really over it.
Maybe two years from now.
Two years from now. That'll work. Thank you. Charles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I too want to say, I'm glad to see Councilman Goodman back, and we have kept him in our prayers, as all of you know, and we missed you. I also would like to say that I plan to be at this ceremony for the new fire truck with all of its advanced technological capabilities. It's beautiful, and it's a great asset to our fire department and for the benefit of our citizens. I was called away, and I was at Rags Hospital of the Day, at, in intensive care with one of my members, so that's the reason I didn't make it, and I'm glad to hear that y'all had a nice ceremony and to, uh...
And we got it pushed back. We knew you wouldn't be here, you couldn't make it, so I put in a little extra effort to get it, to get it back here. We made it, with the help of the driver back in.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, few things, Mr. Mayor. Again, Mr. Goodman, welcome back, and we have missed you. A couple of, well, Friday a week ago, we had a Purple Heart banquet that three council members attended. Mr. Broadway, who was one of the, I don't know what you would call it, he was one of the people in charge, almost in charge of, one of the co-in-charge, and Councilman Allen and I went, and it was a very moving, moving ceremony for, for the Purple Heart recipients. I enjoyed being invited and going. It meant a lot. Second thing, I mean, third thing is that, and I was telling a couple of other council members, that something that we have asked for, for I know, two years, finally has begun to, to come together, and that was fixing the intersection at Central Heights Road and U-Hope Road, which any of you who have driven across it in the last few years, it is, was absolutely horrible. Well, about a month ago, Hunter's Creek property owners had a meeting, and I asked Councilman Allen to attend with me, and they brought it to his attention, as I have prior, but that and, and the speed limit on Central Heights Road, which with this new construction on Berkeley Avenue, Berkeley Boulevard, is going to become more and more used, that we asked to lower the speed limit to thirty-five, so that traffic will not speed through there quite as bad. But if it hadn't been for Councilman Allen, it wouldn't have come, because he had the connections with the Highway Department that none of the rest of us do. And it meant a lot to get it done in that district, and it meant a lot to the citizens of my district, and I appreciate it. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, that's basically all I have to say.
Great. I'd like to congratulate the Purple Heart recipients and those who planned the program. I signed a certificate of appreciation for all of them, and it's amazing the number of recipients who live right here in Goldsboro. A lot of them I know, see them every week or very often, and never knew that they were recipients of the Purple Heart. So to them, congratulations. I wasn't able to be there, but Bill took care of it. I was invited by the Vice Chief of Staff of the Air Force to DC for his retirement, General Jensen. General Jensen spoke here at the fundraiser for the Friends of Seymour. He was invited here. I didn't know General Jensen, but he's known me and I've known of him for a long time. But, long story short, we met, and he's become a good friend of mine. He is a very, very special human being. He lived in Goldsboro, and he still has a home here in Goldsboro, and he's thinking about retiring in Goldsboro. His wife likes it here, she grew up in Dunn. So they are two awesome people, and his ceremony was something, I've been to an awful lot of retirements, but I've never been to a Vice Chief of Staff of the Air Force retirement. Very impressive. And his resume is absolutely unbelievable. If you listen to his retirement remarks, what that man accomplished is unbelievable. He began as an Airman Basic.
And went to four stars.
Four stars, second highest man in the Air Force. It doesn't get much better than that, and he deserves it. An awesome, awesome human being. And he's, he may be one of our citizens. He hasn't told me yet, no yet. He's leaning for it, and his wife likes it, so we're, we're pulling. I, I think we're gonna get him.
If he moves back to his old house, he'll be in my district.
Okay, that's good. He's back, you're right, he's in your district. Do you know him? Have you met him?
At the, uh...
You were at the function?
Yeah.
Well, he is really, really an awesome human being, and I'm glad to say that now he is one of my very special friends. If there's, glad to have you back, William. We've always, always said that. And to the retirees, I hate to see them go, but anytime a person has earned the right to retire, and they decide they want to do it, congratulations and good luck. Stand your journal.